Thumbs up. We'll go ahead and get started. Thank you for being here Monday night here. We will have Pastor Steve with a prayer and followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Again, we just thank you for your love and your grace. And Lord, I pray for our village. I pray that our eyes and our ears will be open, our hearts will be open to your grace, your forgiveness, and your redemption each and every day. Lord, I thank you for the opportunities that you've put across our path. Let us be committed to you each day in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Roll call.
Bailey?
Here.
Bassett?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Egley?
Here.
And Beverly Bassett.
All right. Moving forward, we have a special speaker tonight. We have Michelle Davis with Med Account. She wanted to come up and address how it's been a year now, right?
Almost. Not quite, but we're getting close.
We asked Michelle to kind of give us an update on operations, billing, things of that nature. So, no, 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 you get to go stand at the podium.
Oh, great. Yeah, yeah, perfect. So, yeah, you guys are about two months shy of being a year in numbers. And I don't know if you guys have seen your numbers, but right now you're at, so I did the full year, so your charges are about $525,000 you've collected, a little over $195. Your revenue per transport is $419. That's huge. Your collection rate right now is 67%. That will raise. Again, it's got to be kind of a full year to 18 months when we see exactly where you guys are going to be at. But you're definitely trending where you should be at. So what questions do you guys have regarding the billing program, the numbers, how it works, anything like that?
I think the biggest question I had at the very beginning was just, it took a long time for us to start seeing any kind of money coming in.
Right. So that will happen. So when you look at how the payers work, like, so initially when we started you guys up, we had to credential you. It takes about 30 to 45 days to get you credentialed with Medicare. Once you're credentialed with Medicare, then you can get credentialed with Medicaid and the other ones. So it takes about 30 to 45 days to get that. And then when things start getting billed out, Medicare is the quickest payer. So they pay within about 30 days. Medicaid is about 45 days. The commercial insurances are much further out. So we're looking at, you know, between 45 and sometimes 120 days depending on the insurances to get those to pay back. So like the money that, you know, initially we, you know, the initial runs that we billed out for you guys, it was like around May is when we kind of started. Probably those payments started coming in more toward July. That's just the way it happens. And then once you're billing, you don't notice that dip because you have that continuous amount of dollars coming in. But that's just generally, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield generally takes 120 days to pay, but they also have the shortest time in filing.
Do you know what her collection rate was before we switched to Med Account?
I don't.
It was about 29%.
And this, when you look at your collection rate, that it takes into account your adjustments. So let me give you an idea. So adjustments are a big number in this report, right? So adjustments are a contractual obligation. So if we look at it this way, if Medicare, if you bill $1,000 for a run, okay, Medicare is going to say, our contractual obligation of that run is $500. Of that contractual obligation, we're going to pay you 200. So $300 goes into an adjustment bucket that you can now never collect. So that's, those are what the adjustments are. The adjustments are also resident write-offs. Again, you guys don't hard bill your resident, so whatever insurance pays, you take that. So again, that's something that you're never going to bill out. So that's your adjustments, depending on what you charge for a run, your adjustments are always going to be higher than what your payments are. That's just the law of averages. There's nothing that anyone can do about that, at least right now. Does that make sense?
Seeing how our system runs and how we operate, especially we have contractual services with townships in the area, do you see anything we can do to improve the rate of return and or are we similar to most communities, our size and how, I know you do a lot of communities,
Right, right.
with the same type of system, but we're doing everything we can.
Yeah, and the biggest, the biggest kind of component on that, and you know, Bruce handles that very well, is to make sure documentation is in there. You know what I mean? Like make sure you paint the picture. That can take you from a BLS call, which pays $300, to an ALS call, which pays closer to $400. So again, we're not talking about upcoding, but we're talking about making sure that, you know, the narratives are complete, all the procedures are put in a place when you're doing that run, because if you do it, you want to make sure that you get paid for it. So, you know, I think we were talking about, there was one call that the chief complaint was billing really sick, you know, again. So that's, it's just stuff with, you know, kind of documentation and how you write it. And for the most part, you guys do a great job. Just always cleanup that can happen, so.
Any other questions for Michelle? Like I said, if you think the communication and how the billing's handled, you know, a little bit.
I think everything is going right so far. I've had great communication with the department. Cheryl and I have talked a number of times. By the way, Cheryl has a great report for you that you are going to love. It is brand new. I just showed it to Bruce, so I will be emailing you that in the next couple of days. So no, I think, you know, I, we talk often and, you know, if there's ever an issue, you know, we get together and we get it resolved. So I don't think there's, I mean, you guys can.
As I said, with, without the hospital being here, that was a new, you know, turn and then hiring an outside firm to handle the billing, you know, we had two different scenarios happening. And then the, of course, now several, more than several months, you can see that the numbers have been elevated runs across the board, so. And you work with communities that don't have hospitals. We were blessed to have a hospital.
Yeah.
Hopefully have one against.
Well, and we've had that a lot. I will tell you, it's not unique to your community. We've had a lot of hospital closings when you kind of go, I'm from the Cleveland area, so when you go like Trumbull, Mahoney, like those areas have had a lot of hospitals closing recently. What it will do, I mean, it's not all about dollars, but there is dollars in that because that's not going to raise your mileage, you know, and again, you get paid more on those loaded miles, so that's not necessarily a bad thing, but you know, it just keeps you out of service a little bit longer, so.
Once, well, we have about two months in for the first year. Would it be nice to maybe see any kind of numbers, how it kind of panned out once everything's done, if you get a report?
Yeah, once we have that full year, we'll look at it. But again, I think that, you know, again, there was, there was a lot of stuff that happened in 2024 that, you know, had to be cleaned up. It was cleaned up. You guys did a great job on that. That the next couple of months, three, four months is going to kind of give you a good direction, but 2025 is going to be your true numbers because it's literally, we're going to get the runs from the day you start till the end. Everything is credentialed, everything is up to date. So again, 2025 is probably going to, if you consistently run the same amount of runs, it's going to look better than your 2024, your initial year.
And Cheryl was just showing, I think we had that in our packet right? Sorry about that. Up to this point in time, so sorry for that. Any other questions for Michelle?
Anything that I can do better, that we can do better as company, anything like that?
I haven't heard any complaints.
No, I see Bruce, you work with them more on a regular basis. Do you have any suggestions?
I.
And pretend like I'm not here, Bruce. I'm not yelling at you later.
And honestly, you know, if I, that's the thing, if I have to leave a message, I get a call back if it's not by the, if it's not by 5:00, 6:00 o'clock that day, it's the next day. So, you know, which is rare in this, in this business world, you know. So, no, we, and, you know, that's the thing, if there's an issue, a billing issue, I mean, it comes right to me and I can see it and I can take care of it right away.
Any other questions for Michelle?
Perfect.
Thank you for coming over.
Oh, thank you, guys. I think you're on the right track and, you know, everything looks good from my end, so.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks, guys.
All right. We have approval of March regular meeting minutes in your packet and questions concerned or motion to approve?
I guess one thing that I did not say, first big paragraph, middle of it almost, it says the cost for the concession stand power for one season alone was for more than $700.
I'm going to write up a report, so.
I didn't say that. It was $528 or something. It wasn't over $700. We've given them over $700 when they come to the turf this and fill the conditioner and the quick dry and stuff, but.
No need?
By the way, make a motion to.
Send an email with what you want.
Yep. I make motion to approve the amendment.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
One more quick question. Zuperalene fabrication, is that aluminum radiator?
Air radiator.
Okay. That's a lot more expensive than I thought, but yes.
And Miller?
Yes.
And we've got boards of commissions next. Houston's board met March 25th. Finding commission minutes in your packet?
Very good. Council committee reports, there's nothing anybody meets, just didn't report anything. I don't think we've got any meetings, right? Administrator's report, Cory?
The only thing I have, I got a few things to add on top of what I have in the packet here. Did get some costs for industrial drives repair. Obviously, it's not budgeted to spend that kind of money. Repairs for industrial driver anywhere between $40,000 to $70,000 to repair that street out there. It's about 600 linear feet, depending on how we want to go about the repair. One option is to just, just.
Right down, right down through the middle, just start splitting.
No, sweet, just turn it up.
Great engineering work there.
It's pretty, it's pretty thin out there. That street's pretty thin. I had it quoted to do the full 600 foot from curb to curb full width because it's all spider webbed and alligatored through there. And that's about $70,000 to do that, 600 linear feet of it. And then I was contacted by Bruce Guilford. He's putting in a daycare center out here on East High Street next to the senior center. And he is looking to put approximately 150 foot of six inch curving along the road to go into his parking lot, the drive and approaches. And he is asking if the village would have any interest in helping cover the cost of that curving or paying for that curving for that project. I told him I would bring it to you guys. I know we're having some curving done on Arthur Street before it gets paved. I'm having about a 50-foot curb put in the inside radius and what we're paying is about $90 a linear foot. I don't know what his pricing would be out there on East High Street, but I told him I would present it to you guys and let you discuss it, whether or not the village would have interest in either covering it or helping pay for it.
Do you know if the village has covered anything like that in the past for businesses?
Not since I've been here.
Kent, do you know?
No.
That's usually part of a, part of the project, but tonight I would present it to you guys and have discussion on whatever you choose to do. We did have an employee who's no longer with us, was in the water department, and we had an employee from the wastewater department transfer over to water. So we've had a ad in the paper for the last couple of weeks for wastewater and did do an interview. We had one applicant for this position. This applicant's name was Matt Justice. He did, this was the second time he had applied for a position. I think Matt would be a good fit in the wastewater. He's a local person here. So I would like to recommend to the mayor that we would hire Matt Justice as a full-time wastewater. He has great two labor.
Does he come with any like pre-existing, not conditions?
Working like another village or anything like that?
He was, he just worked in a factory for quite a few years. He's mechanically inclined. He's got some electrical knowledge. He's got a little bit of construction background, so he would know a little bit about everything, really. Obviously, there'd be pending drug screen and everything.
Well, after your interview.
And yeah, background check and drug screen.
I'll make that recommendation for Matt Justice to council of hiring for the water department.
Will he have to obtain any special certifications?
Yeah. Within 18 months, we'd like, I'd like to see him have a class one wastewater license and then a class B CBL as well.
When you say you'd like to see, is it a requirement?
It's, it is a requirement, yes.
I don't want to create an issue, but the person transferring, he's not, his time expired to get down there. Is he going to be able to get with his transfer to the new department?
Say that again.
The person transferring.
Licensing.
He never got his license and he had allotted time.
Correct.
At the sewer plant, so is he going to be able to do it underwater?
Well, that's, that's the plan, is to get his water.
Well, he also has 18 months. What's that to the program?
Well, see, he was employed a lot more than 18 months.
But one thing I would like to see, I know we all discussed it, is now that CBLs aren't $300, they're over $3,000. I'd like to see the village put something in writing, if we're going to pay for your CBL and pay your wastewater license and your water license, that they have to sign some type of contract.
Attention.
Yeah, sure.
Don't we already have that place?
Not for, not for CBL really, no.
Oh.
Not for my departments.
Do we do that though, if it's a requirement for the job?
Timeframe wise, you can put a stipulation timeframe, but are you talking about the reimbursement part?
Well, if we're requiring them to do it and then we're vowing them to the job for so long, are we legally allowed to do that?
We used to, this might be before Scott's time, but we used to do that with some parameter type people, because there's that one guy in the Southern State that still owes us $6,000. So we've had that stipulation.
I think when you say that.
On that end of things, but.
When you say that in the job interview, that this is required for the job, you have 18 months to complete it. If you don't complete it, we have issues. If you do complete it, you have a commitment for at least a year or whatever for us to pay for your training, your schooling, your passing of your tests. Makes sense, so.
Did we already have it first on the end or again?
I don't know, did I get, Cheryl?
You have a motion for the applicant?
I'm going to stop and say.
Matt Justice?
Right.
I'll make the motion.
The sheep doesn't have a driver's license?
Got one motion.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
How soon will he start?
I'll have to go for his drug screen and background, so it'd be nice, it'll be from this Wednesday. It'd be a good starting point.
Use the backup here. When did Bruce want to name it, sir?
He didn't say.
I definitely want, I mean, if you want street light property, does that make it hard?
Well, I didn't know.
We wanted the committee to look at it, we can, I'm not like committee, but definitely need a little bit more details, like some prints on where he's looking at and what kind of pricing he had.
I have, I mean, I've got a little bit of prints for the building itself, but I don't have any pricing on it.
I don't think you can do anything until they do something with the senior center, right?
Senior Center would be okay there. It's right next door to it.
He's down at Empi, yeah.
Once you got the information, if you want to pass it along, has the chair?
Bailey? Because I didn't want to be involved with that because my wife's still kind of.
I was considering, I don't think people see Sherwood, people see Sherwood lately, but I tell you, they did new street repair, they did all their roadwork and infrastructure improvements, but then they put curbs in. It's beautiful, very nice. I mean, it all.
I'm pretty sure they got grant funds to do all those curbing, though.
Yeah, it looks, it makes your town, your downtown district, your main route look very, very pleasant, so. Let's do it all. Did I say that?
Yeah. We should have a recall.
Anyway, if you get a cost of the streetlight property, can address that. It's kind of the first request for something like that here in council, so.
Yeah, I'll touch base with Bruce and if he gets a number, I'll send it to, I'll just send it to the whole committee.
We're on the silent room, so. No, I'm not. I wouldn't want to be involved with that.
Any other questions for Cory?
Reminder, we do have an Easter egg hunt for the community this weekend. Registration starts at 11:30 Saturday morning at the pavilion.
Street sweeper is up and running or train?
The street sweeper is in Forwayne as we speak. It had some ABS module on it.
Bottle lemon or something?
So it's getting warranty work on it.
That was fast.
Some areas, I see, like, oh, the street sweeper isn't, no, you said you're still having to train it on it, and I just wonder if the train is done.
You have the bids in your packet there for the defiance, thank you for those. Alrighty, so those are your reports.
Second reading of ordinance 2025-03 by caption only authorizing the fiscal officer to transfer funds. We have second reading of ordinance 2025-04 by caption only to amend appropriations. First reading of resolution 2025-07 by caption only to enter contract with JDY Excavating LLC for the Defiance Avenue Lift Station Replacement Project and declaring emergency.
Move to suspend the rules.
It's okay.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Second and final reading of resolution 2025-07 by caption only to enter contract with JDY Excavating LLC for the Defiance Avenue Lift Station Replacement Project and declaring emergency.
Second.
Roll call.
Miller?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yep.
Egley?
Yes.
First reading of resolution 2025-08 by caption only authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General to collect all but mayor's court costs and declaring emergency.
I'll just suspend the rules. Second.
Roll call.
Bailey?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Second and final reading of resolution 2025-08 by caption only authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Attorney General to collect all but mayor's court costs and declaring emergency.
Roll call.
Who's second?
Charlie.
Bailey?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Egley?
Yes.
I was just kind of curious, we had talked at our police meeting a couple weeks ago about updating the pay ranges to include the K-9 handler. Are we writing an ordinance on that? Does that need to go through everybody first? I just don't want that to drop off. I know where we're at with that. I didn't. Okay, yeah, thank you.
All right, so for you, we've talked about the past couple of weeks of other, some other projects you're working on, contractual services, kind of just to get those ball rolling a little bit. For instance, like the Verizon Tower, we have their American Tower Agreement, we're waiting on the survey. We got Lock Rap doing that, right? It hasn't been completed yet, but that's something we got to return back with contractual, back to American Tower, right? The industrial park, you started working on that, right, for Keller?
Yeah.
Just a contractual with CIC. Right, so you have to work on some of that stuff. Is there anything else you can?
I met Jared the other day about the ordinances, updating those, I just am working on those. And then Cheryl had emailed me the end of last week about updating the policy for police crime, but it's requesting that. There's a new.
There's a new rule, law now.
Yeah, that the.
Charge additional fees for.
Yeah, I'm sending out an email, a Lexipol to see if they developed a policy on those.
Okay.
We've got something, the Ohio Police use the police two weeks ago requesting any department that has any policy on it, and I don't think I have a response back or not from that, because everybody's looking for one.
You sent, Cheryl sent me a, like, an example. I'm not quite sure where it came from, but it was like sample language. Okay, yeah, yeah, so.
What is it state that you can charge for something?
Yeah, so it goes into effect, well, when it goes back April 4th. So I can charge up to $75 an hour for, if made by request, by cam or in-car video. So I can charge him, the person who wants it, for a public record, $75 an hour up to, I think.
$7.50.
Is it $7.50? Yeah, max it's $750.
Is that a lifetime max?
No, it's not a lifetime max.
Oh, man.
So, and the reason for that is because we have to go, the hours that we have to spend to do the video to redact everything. So we're just time consuming on our part. So hopefully, I'm not even going to say it, I'll change myself.
We've got something, you know, how to use the police two weeks ago requesting any department that has any policy on it and I don't think I have a response back or not from that because everybody's looking for one.
You sent, Cheryl sent me a, like, an example. I, I'm not quite sure where it came from, but it was like sample language. Okay, yeah, yeah, so.
What is it state that you can charge for something?
Yeah, so it goes into effect, well, when it go affect April fourth. So, I can charge up to seventy, seventy-five dollars an hour for, if made by request, by cam or in-car video. So, I can charge him, the person who wants it, for a public record, seventy-five dollars an hour up to, I think.
Seven fifty.
Hundred, is it seven fifty? Yeah, max it's seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that a lifetime max?
No, it's not a lifetime max.
Oh, man.
So, and the reason for that is because we have to go, the hours that we have to spend doing the video to redact everything. So, uh, which is time consuming on our part. So, um, hopefully, I'm not even gonna say it, not all chance myself to might say it, so.
But that's the state, the states allowing that to, to, the department's policy, so. Very good. Thank you, Rachel. I think for Rachel. Uh, what do we have here? Department heads, chief?
So you should have gotten case, one for case and call for service for March. If there's any questions about those. Second thing is, uh, we were awarded thirteen thousand dollars in grant money for our body cameras. We applied in December, I think it was, or before the end of the year, end of the first of the year. That money, uh, basically what we applied for is to help cover the cost of our Axon, uh, contract that we currently have with them right now, uh, to cover that cost. They at least cover, I think, two years, two and a half years. And then I think we do probably to renew again with Axon anyways, or at least that contract should be expiring. So I think it was originally five years and I think we're in two, yeah, or second year, beginning of our third year contract of that. Can't remember. So, uh, we're just finalizing, we've got some, uh, I got email while I was gone last week, so we're just finalizing some paperwork on those to be submitted to them. We learned about it, uh, through the news media, the way we got in this, alright? Because we had received nothing, uh, same, it was same for the sheriff's office and same for the police department. Nobody knew except for what the news media and what E Y had, uh, been a news conference about. So, that's how we found out about it, so, and then, like I said, we just got the paperwork to finalize this stuff. Third thing is, I know I parked on this before about insurance committee, uh, putting an insurance committee together. And the reason I'm bringing it up now, one, is, uh, my, my family is having problems with the insurance company that we currently have, uh, Medical Mutual, and we've been working with the folks, uh, from BORMA and Marathon or somebody in one of those groups that we met with when we were switching, uh, because they're not, we're not getting medications approved that we were originally on. Prior to the switch, uh, today, my wife went to go pick up a renewal for a prescription and she's been on this medication because the last two or three times she's picked it up between three and five days early. They will not allow her to, and it expires on the fifth, or not the fifth, uh, eighth, eighth or ninth. And all she was doing was trying to renew it, you know, and pharmacy here is who we go to, uh, is, uh, called them again today, said no, can't renew it till like April twenty second. Because the last two or three times she's gotten it is because she went in a couple of two or three weeks ago to get it. And we've had problems with them trying to renew, uh, my daughter's medicine for ulcerative colitis. It's been a pain to deal with them. Again, medicine that we've been on before. And then today, I received an email. I get basically a weekly reminder of any House bills or Senate bills that are being introduced to the Ohio legislation, alright? Since March thirty first, there's been seven, whether it's a House bill or a Senate bill filed with, about insurance and healthcare, Medicaid. Doesn't give you a lot what it's about, just kind of gives you a brief, uh, summary what it's about, so I don't know what that, what all these are going to mean. So, and I know BORMA, we're coming up on expiration of the BORMA contract. And I think it's time to put a committee together to start researching things, to see if we can better ourselves to the benefits here and not wait till the last minute to do something, you know, so.
Well, being involved in that office there next to Cheryl and stuff, BORMA is kind of our outreach to check all these different companies that have different programs, different meds, and then they combine it with the group BORMA belongs to, right? I think there's a Buckeye, another company, it's called Buckeye out there.
Buckeye.
They do the same thing, they do the research of who has the best plans and coverage because we're embedded in a group with all these other communities, I don't know, we're embedded with schools and things of that nature, so. I, I don't know how all that works sometimes. I, I think that's the main gist of it, is there are.
We can do our own investigation. We don't need BORMA. We can research our own. I've reached out to Northern Buckeye before when I first came here, alright? And at that time, they weren't taking on new clients. I know Corey's been in contact with, uh, I believe with some individuals or some contacts because they have the school, they have the village of Edgerton, they have several villages in our area that they cover.
You see, that's, other than Buckeye, you said Buckeye was not taking, or is that Buckeye?
What's that?
That was Buckeye doing that or they weren't?
Yeah, northern, I think it's Northern Buckeye. They, they used to have, and whether they still do or not, when I was still at the county, they had a good Sam School. And I know that insurance was much better than what we had at the county because one of the county employee's wife worked there and he'd say it was much better insurance. So there's different things. We don't necessarily have to go through BORMA to do our own research.
Yeah, but, okay, I'm just, correct me if I'm wrong, but because of the group plan that we occurred in with all these other entities that's supposed to quote save us money and or cost overall because we're entitled with other communities and as a group, as a whole package kind of thing.
I, I get that, but that's why I said we need to start now and not be waiting. I've been preaching and preaching about this and we've done nothing.
Council or what?
And I've heard it from others that you guys used to have a insurance committee. So.
It never went for twenty-two years.
Huh, never was?
It never meant twenty-two years I was around. But you know, I think, let's say we switch and everybody's premiums go up, then what's, what are we gonna hear? Council's gonna pay even more?
Well, I'm not worried about that, Ken, it's the mayor, the fact that out there enlists researchers. We just renew and renew and renew. We, we do no research. You know, that's the whole idea of it.
And I get it, you're out there looking at other quotes, other programs that are out there, it's not saying you're gonna switch, but what, maybe there are some different options. Doesn't mean you have to go to them unless it's incredibly good for your, the overall community, I mean, the village employees, so.
So, I think that's all I got, that's all I have.
Because you can form a committee.
Do you know of any other police departments that you've talked to people, like, they rave about their insurance? Like Edgerton or Antwerp or?
Well, I said, I said Edgerton, they pay for their village employees and all I hear back from you guys is, oh, we can't afford theirs. You know, we're not gonna pay for their, or pay for your guys' insurance, so, you know, so I don't know how theirs actually works.
We do, we do pay high for their insurance.
They like it because it's not coming out of their pocket.
Oh, yeah. Anyone would.
So, but.
Alright, we'll, we'll address that, so. Any other questions for Chief?
Yep.
Bring it up next, Chief. Bruce?
I'm assuming that you guys got my email, uh, over the weekend, so that's pretty much the, uh, extent of everything I have. I would like to say that Felix and, uh, Mica, uh, they are now completely state certified. Their certifications went into effect midnight Saturday morning. Isaac, he's been, uh, he's been certified since, um, like, last Thursday. All three have passed their test. We've got one that's tested today, um, so I don't know how he did quite yet, but, uh, I haven't heard and that makes me nervous sometimes, but, uh.
You mean the one that took it today? I talked to him.
Did you?
Yeah, he thought he did well, but he won't know. It takes a couple days to get the test.
He'll, he should know today. He should know today. So, everybody else, I've been getting, I've, everybody that's been, that's been taking the test has been getting their results in about five hours, which, you know, Cheryl and I were talking, when I took it, it was twenty-four hours and when she took it, it was two weeks, you know, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, so, uh, so one of the questions I had was, do I have to bring them up? Were they automatically, since they're already part of, of the fire? Do I have to bring them up to put them on as E M Ts? How does that, you know? I, we, I've, I've never really approached that subject before.
Look to Cheryl.
I know that's upstairs.
Well, and we've had these shifts, you know, kind of thing with additional, I mean.
Yeah, ours.
Alright, but it was just a change of position, right?
They've already been approved and everything is a, it was part of it, you know, they need to be reapproved since they're doing another job.
Thinking, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's a.
Right, yeah, it is, yeah.
It's a.
It's in the department.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's in the same department, it's just like, it's just like when we moved somebody from the part-time to the full-time, so, um, yeah, but, um, other than that, I will say that, uh, we've been really busy. I don't know if you've been paying attention, but I know the nosy neighbors have been asking all kinds of questions out there, like, what's going on? All the sirens. Uh, the other night, we had a fire and then we had another, a medical event at the same time, so, um, yeah. And that's been, that's becoming more and more, uh, prevalent, unfortunately, I, I hate to say that. We get a, we get a call and then, you know, five, ten minutes later, we get another one, so. Unfortunately, uh, from what I'm hearing, that is not only a Hicksville, Ohio problem, that is a problem nationwide, so. I, I just want to say one thing that, you know, there's been some questions about, you know, what our response times are. Over the weekend, my phone blew up with videos of, of fire departments and EMS agencies either not responding or taking an hour to get to someplace. So, um, if we have to, if we have to drive from here to Farmer and it takes us ten minutes, give us a little bit, give us a little bit leeway, so.
Well, I notice you've been having multiple calls at the same time and, um, your, your fire department and you and I know it's in town and even a little bit out of town, you know, even the police department, they rush to the scene and you do what you can, so. You know, with your numbers here currently, you've been able to run that second squad and or, uh, I think there was a certain situation where you had that other second squad on standby, uh, somebody showed up, but there was already E M Ts, right, at the scene? So, it just worked out by having this combination.
Right.
I think it's gonna help situations in certain areas, so.
Right.
Uh, I think these young people and individual, this might be young, but they're stepping up.
Something that, uh, was, I, I unfortunately got a, a text message yesterday. The gentleman that we approved at the last council meeting will not be joining us. He is leaving EMS completely.
Okay.
So.
That was the paramedic, right?
That was the paramedic. He is leaving EMS after, after about thirty years because he's tired of things.
Um, Bruce, you know, Abby's due right around the corner.
Yeah.
She's finishing up her schooling.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know what her plan is, if she plans to get another job right away or stick around.
She's already been hired someplace. I can't tell you where, but she's already been hired.
Well, I think I might have known that. I had some conversations, but I didn't confirm anything, but, um, I wasn't sure, is there somebody that is part-time that you plan on moving into her position? What does that look like for you?
Okay, so, one thing, so this is gonna be kind of a trial run for us when Abby goes, when Abby goes off. My thought process is, right now, we're gonna, I'm gonna drop Rebecca to second shift. She's currently on the midnight to eight. Rebecca will come work with me on the port of midnight and we will have the, some of the part-timers pick up the eight, the, the midnight to eight, uh, at this point. And, and the reason why I'm saying it's, it's kind of a dry run is because when she does leave, um, that, this period moving forward will let me know if I can count on those part-timers or if I have to turn around and hire a full-timer. So, right now, right now, my, my intention is not to put a full-timer on from midnight to eight, but I reserve the right to do that.
Yeah, I respect your decision. My only fear is, is when we weren't fully staffed, we had people coming in here very, very upset about it from around the county.
Yeah.
Who didn't necessarily know the situation very well.
Right.
And, um, I would hate for us to have to say again, well, we didn't post a position, knowing that we knew someone was gonna be leaving. That's my only fear. I just want to make sure that we're gonna have the coverage. We finally got to a point where we're fully covered. I would hate for us to not post something.
Right, well, and that, and that brings me to, to this, you know, I asked Cheryl, you know, the other day about, uh, because Abby actually asked me, she's like, so how many part-timers can you actually hire? And I'm like, you know, that's a good, good Cheryl question, you know, because we're not paying, you know, we're not, the, the part-timers are only allowed up to twenty-nine hours, okay? And we're not paying the, the benefits, okay? And that, the benefits package is a huge amount, okay, and I get that. I mean, I know, I know what we're paying, alright? So, um, if I can hire the part-timers to kind of cover, but again, you're right. If I, if I'm noticing that I just don't have that, then I'm gonna hire. And I've already, I'll be honest with you, I've already had, I've already had a couple people approach me about, about, about that.
That want full-time?
That want full-time.
Yeah, take them where you can get them.
Well, that's, that's exactly, that's exactly it, you know, I, I will be honest with you, the, you know, when I started last year, we had what, five? Five of us? Now there's twelve. By the end of this year, my, my plan is to have twenty. Those are numbers that you haven't seen since the late eighties, early nineties, at all. And you know why people are coming? Because, because they, they hear that this department treats them with respect.
Well, I've noticed you've had some people jump departments, I mean, or other entities, not saying their situation or anything, but, uh, you know, they've moved from other agencies to, to work that part-time shift, so.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. We're, you know, we're, we're doing what we can and you're right. Right now, we are in a very good spot, knock on wood. I mean, very good spot. And that's why, uh, like Isaac, Isaac right now is running, is, is doing a lot of onboarding time because I do feel like he is the one that took advantage of going on calls with us. So he knows what we expect, so getting him turned around in a timely manner is, is in my wheelhouse, you know? If I can get him, if I can get him turned, turned around in three to four weeks, then that's what I'm gonna do.
Because the people you got on this list, they seem like they're go-getters, I mean, um, just from being around them in other, other situations. They're, in fact, they're gonna give a hundred percent to the job, so.
Right.
Whatever it takes. Any other questions for Bruce?
Thank you.
Um, just FYI, you two and, and Ron will be receiving an email from me tonight. Just FYI, you two and Rod will be receiving an email from me tonight, so.
Thanks for the prelude.
This is Spencer's coming.
All right.
I'm not going to bed until I get it.
Thank you for that.
I am.
It'll go to my spam anyways.
Come up in there. Yourself, we, what you do here, I told you I had to talk.
Oh, Lord.
I'm gonna be short.
I don't like being a BORMA people. Hi.
For some of us that we don't know you or some of them may not.
Majority of everybody I do know, but I'm Christina, park director.
How's it going so far, Christina?
Really good, actually.
Yeah, elaborate a little bit on what you got going on at the park?
Oh, everything and anything. Cleaning, cleaning up around the pavilion, we've done all of the, we've cleaned out the gutters. A lot of the plants and stuff were neglected, so we're bringing those back to life. The memorial site there at the pavilion, that's another thing that I wanna take special care of. I feel like it's kind of been, I don't know, it's not very well taken care of. So we've been doing that, working on all of the field work too, kind of getting them up to my standard. I say that my standard, cause I have a little touch of OCD, Eric knows about that. So just working on the fields, getting them up to, like, this is the first day that the Little League boys were able to practice on the fields, cause they've been so wet. So they were very happy to practice on those today. We've had a couple of varsity games, those all went well. Other thing we're doing is the bathrooms, restrooms, keeping those up to par, froggy park. Ordered different supplies, keeping those in good standards. Just cleaning up debris and stuff from the winter time too. Clean up sticks. Trying to think what else we've done. We've done anything, I've already mowed, I had to mow the varsity boys field. I've rolled all the fields, put MVP on all of the boys fields as well. We've just been really busy down there.
Kind of longer curve, you've been doing it what, a month now, maybe?
Yeah, a little over a month.
Yeah, I guess, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions for Christina?
Probably all the law maester bosses who used to have.
Hey, man.
Well, thank you. If there's anything else we can do for you, let us know.
Yeah, sorry, I don't want, I don't want to speak.
You're like, you did a great job.
I'm sorry, but yeah, I'm sure my, you actually go down to the park and see that what we've been doing, it's better than what I'm describing myself, so.
I encourage people, go down and talk to you. I stopped down there once to introduce myself, but kind of talked a little bit about operations and what you had in your plan and.
Just put my stamp on it, that's, that seems the good thing, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Cheryl, follow you.
Well, if you look at the cash summary by fund, you'll notice that we've brought in so far this year, one point seven million. We've spent two point, no, two point oh three six million. You have the collections from utilities, the income tax, which is looking a little better. The Hicksville PD and mayor's report for the month of March. I put in EMS collections so far this month, I mean, this year. And if you look at the boxes on the side, since this is a new report, you'll see where it has the name of the month, that's how much money I've collected here. Because some of them still send it to the village rather than to MedCount. And the other number is what MedCount has collected and then our total, which I highlighted. And then all the stuff below that, or all the fees that came out were some kind of return, we had to give money back. And the bottom line is how much we, MedCount is sending to us. But March is still blank because we won't get that until the end of April, it comes in a month late. I gave you a copy of the first half of our real estate taxes. And all of the fees that we pay, I put an extra box out there so you can see where the money goes. And I have a contract for the funeral home, indigent burials. It expires this in three days. And I talked to Mr. Turnbull and he would like to renegotiate our fee, that we pay them. And at the same time, we have an indigent request. But since it's in our timeline and it's under a contract.
I was gonna say, if they hadn't expired, it should just be.
It hasn't, yeah. So anyway.
How often do we look at that contract? I mean, is it?
Been five years, everybody hears.
It automatically renews, but he wants to negotiate the price.
Did he give any idea how close to that number he's going on?
He didn't, but we're not going to that number.
Well, no, he didn't know what they were.
But I will find out.
Correct me if I'm wrong, do we allow a certain type of burial, right? Or that we will cover a certain level or?
We're required to for indigent.
Right, right.
Residence.
Right. And even at that level, or whatever that is, it's definitely a precedent up over the last five years.
Well, yeah, but if a Berlin, I mean, you know, who I'm talking to doesn't go for it, then you can use anyone.
There's another thing, it's set by the state, the max that they can go.
I don't think so, I haven't found it.
I'm just curious, cause sometimes, you know, in those indigent plans, if you're responsible for the management.
You know, would Steve be any benefit with his funeral service? Steve, the pastor, he sells carols.
Oh, with the other.
It's a cremation period, that's it.
Help me understand this, so, okay, so we're required by law to pay for this? But they don't set a minimum, maximum on it? Whatever Turnbull says, we have to pay, we pay. I mean, is that?
We can shop around.
Well, we can shop around, okay.
Yeah, you can shop around, you can have it done anywhere.
Is that something you want Cheryl to address with, with them? Or do you wanna have a committee talk to Tom about that situation? I mean.
Sounds like streetlight.
Part property.
There to there.
Yeah.
Well, since you're meeting on the other topic, right? Curbs and cemeteries? I mean, just saying.
You wanna deal with them?
Yeah, you wanna talk to, yeah. Cheryl will work on that, get, get us a report back. Any questions for Cheryl? My turn?
Since we've been talking about property, I wanna bring back to the table, Hook Park, Dan Hamer Drive. Still think the village should put those things up for auction. Spent a lot of time this summer taking care of the grounds, mowing them, paying taxes on them. We're not ever gonna do anything with them.
Wants to talk about it and streetlight property. Discuss the.
Discuss and bring a recommendation back to council?
The linear feet one for the.
It's, it's.
It's pretty.
Park, can we sell it? Virgil said, looked it up and you can.
That's one that was a lot of years ago, we brought about that, it was supposed to be a possible park or something.
Yeah, it was, it was Troy and Heflin families that can still.
As long as the council finds that the real estate's not needed for any municipal purpose, it's like that, our business is, and we own the property, so.
All right, Streetlight Property Committee, which I'm confident, sure.
You got a chair?
Apparently you're the chair.
That's good, thank you.
Your agenda.
Yeah. I just had a couple of things real quick. Corey already expanded on the Easter egg hunt this weekend. Thanks again for all the volunteers and people put that on. Community Good Friday service is Friday, April eighteenth and it is Cornerstone Church hosting it for the community. Everyone is welcome. The service starts at seven PM. And Cornerstone, that's the one on Arthur Street, just down the way from the Memorial Park there, across from the Midnight Church. I had a meeting with Director Nick Witchman. He is with, he's new director for the Defiance Senior Center, kind of elaborating on some of the things that they've starting to change a little bit. Direction for the senior center, they're always trying to help the, the people, games, activities, food, lots of different things. And he said, as times change, they have to redirect what their thinking is, cause I guess seniors twenty years ago to seniors now, they have different interests, right? Kind of thing, so. They're video gaming, they're gonna be video gaming when they're seventy years old, headphones and stuff on. That's what I could do, but he actually would like to come to council and update us on some certain happenings here in the community and the county of his outreach. He's coming on April twenty-first. We are still working on the hundred and fiftieth celebration. I wanna thank the committee for coming together, working on that. Again, that's June fifth and sixth. It is a ongoing process. We're trying to finalize some of the events and dates for those festivals, but, you know, we want everybody to be included. I appreciate everyone's help on that.
June sixth and seventh.
That, what did I say?
September sixth.
Oh, I'm sorry. June fifth, sixth and seventh.
Six and seventh are Friday, Saturday.
Right, but there's the kickoff dinner at Crook Miller Thursday night, the fifth. That's kind of kicking it off, so. The Historical Society's presenting that on the fifth. And then sixth and seventh is like all day long downtown festival, so, yeah, but get that going on. Facebook keeps kind of putting some updates on there, Chamber of Commerce is helping put some outreach on that. Then real quick, I lost it here. The, there's a new foster program. They are looking for foster parents. There is a, a need, there's a lack of foster parents in our county. And when I say county, it's called Treatment Foster Care. It's for Defiance Polting, Henry Fulton Williams County. And they're, they're with the Defiance Polting Consolidated Job and Family Services. They're starting a new program for outreach for foster parents. So if anyone is interested in maybe looking at something they could do for children and help outreach for bringing them into your home and fostering them for a while, they would greatly appreciate it. They're sending some press releases around, but I told their director, Charity, that I would pass on the word here at council. But you can reach Charity, her phone number is four one nine, three nine nine, six one one seven. And that's if you're interested in fostering a child and helping them through some situations, so I would totally pass that on. That's all I have for right now. Does anybody have anything for me?
I'd like you to adjourn.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes, please.
Nick.